All right, it's January 25th. We'll start the Select Board meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we're gonna deviate from schedule a little bit tonight. We've got a bunch of things going on in public, non-public. But we're gonna skip manifest minutes for now and committee reports. And we're gonna go straight to John. You can start with your report.
Okay, I'm gonna start on item number three. The fire station overhead door safety overhaul. The chief doesn't have three quotes. The total cost is sixteen four forty. I would recommend proceeding with what he has. It's difficult to get vendors. He knows the electrician and the overhead door person comes highly recommended. I handed out the sheet. It should be near the back of your packet, actually. The overhead door quote and the electrical, all the electrical work that needs to be done, which is to install conduit to eight lift master garage door motors, install eight open-close stop controllers outside radio room wall, terminate door opener wires in lift master enclosure, terminate wires at open-close stop controllers outside the radio room. Electrical contractor will provide twenty-six foot scissor lift rental and his responsible coordinated delivery. The door quote is to have those units, the eight lift master.
Wait, John, which team do you?
It should be very end of the group that I've named out.
So is that this?
Yes.
Everything for the doors?
Yes. Yeah, there should be two for the door. One side is electrical and one side is the, or second page is the door itself. I mean, the units themselves that need to go in there.
So wait, so the number you said was sixteen?
Right, so you have to add seventy-six hundred and sixteen hundred, which is installing photoise and installing the units themselves. And then they have to be wired, so the electrician has to do the work of wiring them. And the electrician comes to the other number, which is seven thousand two hundred and forty, just above his signature.
Okay, but I think I'm...
Just above the signature at the bottom is seven thousand two forty, which is the electrician.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
And then you add that to the seven thousand six and the sixteen hundred for the auto-reverse devices that go on there.
And this is how many doors?
Eight.
Eight doors. Are they all having problems or are we just gonna do them all at once?
They're all, it's a safety issue. There is no reversing. It's already happened to two of the doors.
Yep, okay, yep. All right, so what John is looking for is approval from the board, two things, approval from the board to move forward with the sixteen thousand four hundred and forty cost. And then do we want it to come from the town building expendable trust or ARPA? So first, are we okay to give Jay the green light to go forward with it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
ARPA or town building expendable trust?
I would defer to John. What do you think of the best recommendation would be on that or Chairman, if you, whatever?
Yeah, it's almost a political decision because when you get into the deliberative session, we're asking for ninety thousand into a fund which we hadn't even used until this year when I found it and we started using it. It would make sense to say, look, we've had these three projects alone that have drained the fund between those. So that's why I'm thinking the expendable trust would make the most sense because then you can justify why you need to put more money in there.
I agree.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And the ARPA money, that's a little more strategic for us.
I, yeah, I'm gonna bring that up at the next, my next point.
All right, do you need a motion on that, John?
Yes.
So motion to approve and then expend from trust fund.
I'll make a motion to the Select Board approve the repair of the overhead doors at the fire station for combined cost of sixteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars with the money to be sourced from the town building expendable trust fund.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett. Roll call, vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
The, before we leave this, when the electrician is doing that, can you have him look at that problem that exists between the, we noticed it today because the generator and the solar, there's something going on with some of your plugs that's not right. And maybe he could diagnose what the issue is. I don't know whether it's the solar guy, the generator guy, or who.
We wanna do it in conjunction with the solar people. I'd rather do it with solar, but we're having the solar people, yes, the answer is yes because there is, there is something with the bus transfer system that has changed since it's older.
Right, and there's, you need to get that corrected for a safety standpoint as well. The other is the fire station is without heat. We have a temporary unit sitting outside that then pipes hot air in, draws the cooler air back out. And it's a standalone that's rented. It's fairly expensive. I mean, it's a thousand a week plus all the costs of the plumber going up there regularly filling it and checking it and everything else. So I wanted us to go ahead with forty-four thousand dollars to the Bodett Plumbing, who has our plumbing, I mean, our HVAC contract. One has been failed since October. The other one failed probably in part because it was carrying too much load. And we just need to put two new boilers in there. And ARPA is the only source of money that we have available for those boilers.
So, just so I understand, is there's, there's parts or ten K?
Well, if you tried to repair it.
Oh, fine, okay, okay, okay. And the forty-four number, does that include the labor and everything?
Yes.
That's all inclusive, okay.
That fire station is how old now, twenty years?
Fifteen, sixteen, two thousand seven, November two thousand seven.
I'd just be curious to know, you know, these boilers, they're designed to last thirty years. Why are we, got shortened life on it? Is it lack of maintenance or?
We've had them, we've had them maintained here with other companies.
If we go into non-public, I'll have an explanation for reputation.
Do you need that explanation before we vote on this?
No, I have no idea where it's going, but I'm in support of giving it.
Do we have paperwork on it or, do we have anything on it or just what you're saying?
Just what I'm saying at this point. I, I, I'm trying to keep this moving along as fast as we can because we're without heat over there. And if it was summer, we could go about a longer bid process and everything else. But here is the permit to do it with, so we just gotta keep going.
Boiler failed on Sunday.
Okay.
Should have a wood stove for a backup. All right, I'll make a motion to Select, oh, sorry.
Wait, one second, any discussion or you get everybody good?
All right. I'll make a motion to Select Board approve the replacement of the two fire station boilers at a cost of forty-four thousand dollars with the funding to be sourced from ARPA.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett. Roll call, vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Okay, those are the two that I think, unless you had something else, Morris Chief. Then the next one is...
Wait, one second, just while the chief is here, I'm just, first off, thank you to you and the crew, amazing. Just, I know how hard this has been and as always, everybody does amazing jobs. Just for a message for people who are watching, the police department and fire department are pretty much on top of everything that's going on and that still needs to be addressed. But if there is something that you feel that they need to be made aware of still, there are two numbers you can call. One is six zero three six seven nine five six six six. And the second is six zero three six seven nine eight nine zero three. But again, thank you to you and everyone else.
Not emergency, emergency please.
Right. Yeah, just so everybody heard that, those two numbers are for non-emergency. If it's emergency, still use nine one one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
The next item is the AV people want eight thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars to do to the deliberative session. It looks like you're buying all new equipment when you look at the sheet. I have it in here as to the breakdown.
Are we renting this or keeping it?
That's renting.
That's renting it for one day.
This is insane.
Yes, I totally agree. It's insane. I, they want an answer. I have indicated to them, they're probably gonna get a negative answer, but I think we need to do something different. If worse comes to worse, just a point-and-shoot camera with a record feature you can put on a tripod and you could record it as far as posterity goes and then upload that JPG file. As far as sound goes, we've got plenty of mics. All we need is the box that then connects, we've got two big speakers over there. I was looking at it. I don't know, I think we probably, working with the school, could do something or other, a lot cheaper than this, even if we ended up buying...
Okay, so the school is, I talked to the school and they had, they didn't have a quote yet, right? And they were waiting on their quote. What has happened is, if you recall, historically, it's been terrible.
Yeah.
It's been terrible. And then I think last year it was contracted out or?
Yes.
Yeah, so historically, the school and us have contracted separately. So the school was surprised to hear that this number that we received was eight thousand dollars as well. They're gonna get back to me with a number. However, as I'm looking at this, I think somebody needs to review it with them because they've got two cameras, they've got a production switcher, which we don't need, wireless mic, wireless lav mic.
You think it's gonna broadcast in nationwide?
Audio mixer, there's way...
Yeah, we're not CNN.
No, no, no. As far as like bringing our stuff over there, I, I think that that's just gonna put too much of a burden. It's just, it's not gonna work out well. I think we need to go back to these people and say, let's get real about what's needed.
Well, either that or work with the school's own people if they, what they're going to do, because I'm sure, I doubt if the school's gonna wanna pay this once they see it.
No, but they're, they have contracted out and they're still gonna contract out. So, because it...
I wonder if their proposal looks like ours.
As of Monday, they didn't have one that I'm aware of. But, I mean, we don't need three-floor mics. We don't need six handheld plus six tabletop. We don't need wireless labs. We don't need a, what the heck is a press box? And we don't need an audio mixer. We need two cameras, a number of table mics, and one come up and speak at the mic.
Yeah, because traditionally, we only have like a hundred people that show up anyways.
Yeah.
And we need to have speakers.
I mean, labor alone, three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
I don't see speakers here.
Yeah, I mean, but it has to be...
That'd be for an army.
But it has to be good enough that people can watch it and, you know, I'm happy to meet with you with this person and I don't know if you wanted to, Tony, but...
Yeah, depends on the day.
Yeah.
I make a motion to deny this proposal right now. Get rid of it. If they wanna talk, they can, but this proposal should be denied.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay. I've got consensus. I just couldn't imagine paying that much money for what...
We don't need two cameras, we don't need a production switcher.
But if they're running mics, I assume they have to have the mics go to something. And I don't see speakers.
Well, that's the, that's the audio mixer.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the audio mixer then has to go to speakers.
The production switcher is take camera one, take camera two. That's what a production switcher is.
Yeah. Well, I've seen it done with one camera that swivels.
All we need, we have one camera that we, that they pretty much fix, right?
Yeah.
That's it.
The audio is more important than the video.
Correct, correct. And we don't need tabletop plus handheld plus labs.
Yep.
I, I've worked in this business, so, I know.
Okay, so that's a, not, not that much. Does the board want to have, they had originally, you had originally scheduled to have a meeting on the twenty-sixth, but the Budget Committee made good progress. Hopefully, we'll have things signed tonight as, as it goes around. John, I've got the budget form for you to sign in there. So I don't think we need a meeting on the twenty-sixth, but do you want a meeting next Monday? Getting ready for deliberative session. Deliberative session's a week from Saturday.
If we, we've already agreed to the order, we have to talk about tonight, who's gonna put forward which. You've taken a great job of doing talking points for us. Is there anything we need to talk about next week?
I'd like to see the department heads there at least ask any questions, should there be any, other than that.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Other than that, I mean, I think everything's good so far.
John, any, any reason you think we should plan on it next week?
No, I assume tonight you're gonna get everything done that you could, that we would've done next week, except for, I think we've, we've got to jump on it and gotta, I was worried we were behind schedule at one point in December, but I think we've caught up and we're in good shape now.
Okay.
Okay.
So unless something catastrophic comes up, no meeting?
Okay. I've got the information from REC. I wasn't going to try to discuss it tonight because I thought we had enough else going on, on the agenda. If you've got questions, get to me on that quote. There is two proposed, there's two different options, one of which would put a door from Courtney's office through that wall and this would become the rest of the office space, recreation, and that end would become REC storage. They'd, you know, put a wall for a closet like in that area. And the new meeting room would be down in the community room, which is a little bit smaller, but still pretty good size. It's not that much smaller than this. And that's one option. The other option is that we put REC down there, move everything down there, build new offices out of that space. Disadvantage of that is REC is further from the gym and the kids and everything. I think whichever you do, both rooms should be done for fit and finished. In other words, new floor, new paint, make sure the ceilings and lights and everything are up as part of the process.
Does that door go away or does that one stay?
That one would probably stay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, no problem. While we're talking flooring, talking with Clarence and Dale today, it appears we won't have to go through the kitchen floor at all, that we can make a plan that will avoid the kitchen floor.
Good.
For the bathroom plumbing?
For all the bathroom plumbing. And what we'll do, the sink that's in there, we can drain through into the bathrooms or pump it. That's what we're gonna do on the sink that, there's a sink way, way down there. It's a long ways to run. It sets the height of the pipe. We're gonna pump from that sink up to the bathrooms and start at the bathroom so we've got a better slope on the, on the pipe. Which that in the two police bathrooms, the women's bathroom, cross the hall right by the wet mop sink closet, then into the two bathrooms, and then go through that wall and in the boiler room and the REC storage closet, run the pipe over and under the stairs that go down into the gym on the far side of the kitchen and out. That's the, appears to be the plan going forward.
I think that's a good plan.
So, just to, just to update you on that.
Okay, so back on the REC stuff. So if we're not meeting next week, our next meeting will be February sixth. Are we, we on track or did we get off-track calendar because we've added stuff or?
On, yeah, well, I have scheduled the meeting for the fourth, right after the deliberative. If, if an article is amended and you wanna change your recommendation, you have that option.
On the sixth.
On the, well, yeah, if you're meeting on the sixth, you probably don't need a meeting on the fourth.
No, because the deliberative's on the fourth. So if we meet on the sixth, we'll talk about REC.
Yes.
At that time. And I just like, do we want Courtney here for that?
Yes.
Okay.
So the plan will be two six, recreation, Courtney.
Yep.
If you have any changes. I've also, excuse me, okay, so we've got that. I've got, there's a lot of highway stuff. Highway has been right out straight, working with trees that have been down. We've been running a constant list of streets that are closed. It runs, you know, there's six or eight, we're on it this morning, that were closed at one point or another because of trees, wires, or a combination of both.
Yep.
You know, I have to say, someone who's been out all night doing plowing and all that stuff and watching the highway guys do their job, plus keep the roads going as best they can, with the limited staff they had, I felt they did a fabulous job. Despite the weather conditions and all that, I thought they did very well. So I had a chance to speak with Matt today and he was right on top of it, so things are in good shape.
Yeah, I mean, they've, they've put a lot of work in. I think that we commend police and fire, but let's not forget highway too, that they really did a good job on this storm.
Yeah, sure.
One other FYI, the trustees plan to invest some of the capital reserve money in CDs of longer term. As a practical matter, something like the fire department capital reserve probably won't be used for four or five years. I mean, they're putting annual amount in. You can't take it out until you have a town meeting so you know you've got at least a year before you can do it. And if you order a truck, you may have another year. They were talking about putting some of it into longer-term secure investments, you know, like CDs through a bank to get, you know, like three and a half percent instead of a half a percent that they're making now. So I don't see any issue with that.
Is that within our investment policy?
I believe it is because it, those meet the requirement of the state for secure investments.
Okay, and then is there, is there any way you can lose money on a CD?
Not if FDIC is secured.
So it's not, okay.
If you take it out early and pay a penalty, you could...
Well, that's what, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, if you take it out early, you might pay a penalty of some of the interest that you earned, but there's, I don't see that we'd be taking it out early. I mean, the only thing that could happen, that you suddenly needed to buy a new firetruck and needed a special town meeting and went to special town meeting to spend it and, you know, it was tied up, that's just such an unlikely scenario, I don't see it happening.
What, yeah. We live in interesting times.
You're right.
So what term are they looking at?
I think it would vary, but I'm assuming that they wouldn't go much more than a year.
Okay.
Because, as I said, most of these require a town meeting and before you can expend from it, like the revale money.
Yeah.
We know we're scheduled with twenty-five. They could put that in to come out that year if they wanted to.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any concerns about that?
Well, wow. We're still waiting for someone, so why don't we, we could discuss who's going to speak to the...
Oh, here we go.
Oh, yes, just a minute.
Motion to go into non-public personnel.
Uh, no, hiring, B.
B. All right, I'll make a, come on, Anderson, I'll make a motion to enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one... Yeah, per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two B.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett. Roll call, vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
All right, we're going to enter non-public. We will be coming out of non-public.
...to where our budgets this year, that the highway went up only two percent and this went up only three percent. And if people question, we already know enough to say, well, the salt has gone up twenty-five percent from what we used to pay for. So that increased it. Out of that eight fifty-five budget in there, these are things that we, you know, are part of that. And we can generally do a general synopsis of what, what was said and what was done.
This is gonna take longer because it's not as transparent as what people are used to seeing. And there's gonna be all kinds of questions about what's in there, what's not in there, how much we paying for salt. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
My, oh, thank you.
Ooh, we're live.
My, my thought would be, you start with a warrant article. This is what the budget is. Any questions?
No, no.
That's, that's how I would recommend in a deliberative session, you do it. Because you've changed the whole, all they have to do, unless they amend it, that's what goes forward. And if somebody doesn't get up with an amendment, you go to the next warrant.
But how do they know to make an amendment if they don't know what's in it?
If they haven't done their homework, they don't.
And I'm, John, I'm with you.
I think I'm losing, but that's okay.
I'm not losing my vote, so that's fine.
Ben, Tony, Tyler, what do you guys think? You obviously know where John and I are.
Yeah, I mean, we always, we always have gone just section by section with that, but, but yeah, I see the other side of it. Like, we've had so, and look at, look at all the extra meetings we've had, right, to get this budget finalized.
Our job.
And there's a lot of empty chairs out there, right? Is it, do we really have to rehash the topics of all these meetings between Select Board, Budget Committee, you know, Planning Board, all that? So do we have to rehash all that at a deliberative session to get people up to speed when, yeah, there's, there's a little responsibility on their part to do some homework, maybe look through minutes or videos or attend a meeting to know what's going on?
Isn't it our opportunity to present our case to?
Then there's that, right? Because this is what we're presenting to the town. And, you know, like, like in the past, going through section by section, we would tell people, all right, for, you know, for REC department, these are the big movers and this is the reason why. Any questions, moving on, right? So, you know, there's a happy medium, but, but I don't, I, I wouldn't wanna see it become a rehashed, you know, you know, event, you know, combination of all previous meetings over the past year because, you know, folks don't wanna come down on a Monday night or a Wednesday night and sit and watch.
You can take that position or you can say, we're gonna acknowledge that people, that it's our job to do that. It's not their job and they, we know they aren't coming to meetings and we can penalize them for that. Or we can say, we know they're coming to the deliberative section expecting to learn and to understand what we've done.
Yeah. I, I do think there's a happy medium, but we just have to, you know, control it so it doesn't get out of hand, you know?
I think the time, what we're gonna go through, and again, to make this not a twelve-hour episode, is all our warrant articles are going to be at least two and a half hours for us to get through all those. It's probably get to get two and a half hours to get through the first one. Again...
I don't know, there's, there's a lot of no budget impact on there.
I mean, if you, if you wanted to print out, this is my happy medium. You want to print out fifty of those and leave them on a table. But I would address Michelle as going through this in the manner that this is what she should use. And not have it as a thing of like, and she should just be reading it and going through and say, this is where the highway budget came out at two percent, three percent. This is where the Wichita Hall budget came out, this is this. And not be like, this is where the highway is. Does anybody have any questions on it? And when, because that is going to be just...
Tyler, your opinion?
A nightmare.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the moderator's rules and I like to see that it's actually right in there that if people have time limits. And I think that, again, someone shouldn't be able to speak on anything twice, three times, twelve times without other people having a voice or whatever. So if we can keep that down, that's gonna move the meeting along.
This moderator's gonna be...
So, so let me ask you on that. So, so let me ask you on that, say.
But then we better, sorry.
I wanna hear, uh, I wanna hear what Ben has to say, I wanna hear what all the board members have to say.
Well, we are at SB two, at, at some point, we should probably make the transition to this, but it's only our second year into SB two, and as John had mentioned earlier, you know, the four percent cap, uh, you know, where budget cuts were made on, I'm not so sure I wanna see both budgets up there at the same time, I think we're, just explaining it could be enough, and then just move on.
The department heads are gonna have to probably, if, if people start going.
Well, the department heads are gonna be there to ask questions, but.
To answer questions.
Answer questions, I'm sorry, answer questions, thank you.
Maybe, maybe that should be part, part of the department heads' presentations is to explain what they had to forfeit this year, right? Or, yeah, our job, you know, maybe, maybe even an informational sheet showing people, you know, we, we axed this, and this, and this, we cut this in half, and we eliminated that, and, and just, you know, lay it all out there, so people know what, what they're sacrificing because of the tax cap.
I'm glad you came in. I thought this was gonna be feisty, nah, yeah.
If I can ask about, back to Tyler's question about the three-minute limit, so if somebody comments on the executive session, they've got three minutes, they can then comment on the election section for three minutes, they can comment on zoning for three minutes. They can comment each section, they get a new clock, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Don, put your moderator hat aside for a minute.
Yes.
Okay, um, citizen, citizen Don, what would you expect or want coming into the deliberative session?
I'm a little torn myself, because of, yes, there's an expectation of how things were done, but I also think the reason so many people wanted to move to NSB two in a deliberative was to slim that down and just get a voice at, at the polls, so I do feel like we should be starting to whittle it down and cut it back, 'cause I think, yeah, it's exhausting, and a lot of people don't want to sit through the whole rigmarole, but there is an expectation of some explanation, so, I mean, yeah, I think, especially with the four percent cap and the struggles you all have, I do find, think there should be a way that either you or your department heads give voice to that. Yeah, and having the full budget available, as Sammy said, like maybe fifty copies available for anyone who wants to.
We're gonna have the projector, right?
The question becomes this, or this, does not really project well, if you've got, what, what usually is on the projector is the wording of the article.
Right, okay.
It helped you, Don, I'm sorry. It is, I mean, I'll.
So what I'm getting from this, it sounds to me is that this is going to shorten today, is that the general consensus I'm hearing?
It might not.
John?
I, I, I think no matter what happens, you have to have copies of this available, but I think if, when whoever is presenting section by section, this could be their guide, and people might ask questions from this, but this is what they're, this, this would be what they start talking about initially, and if somebody says, well, where, where did you cut in the executive, and the selectman could say, well, we cut out of the, um, merit pool, even though we support people getting wages, so we, we cut eighteen thousand dollars because of the cap, but that, you know, that the person who's presenting has just given the figure, it's two hundred and seventy-five thousand compared to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. In other words, last year, twenty-two was two hundred and seventy-five, nine seventy-three, and this year is two seventy-five, seven forty-eight. How did you come in the same even though you gave raises and other things? Well, you cut the eighteen thousand, but I wouldn't wanna get into, well, we also went up on, uh, we, we, we cut on four hundred dollars out of equipment, and we did cut, um, uh, we, we added forty-eight dollars to the copy machine lease, and, I mean, that's where you wanna avoid, I mean, to me, the only thing you talk about in executive
We've never done that, John, we've never done that. It, it's been, you know, highway, there's an increase of X, and that's because, you know, ABC, in, uh, library, there's a decrease of X driven by XYZ.
Okay.
I do agree with John in the sense that, yes, I think it's your job to present the budget and to give the important caps, but I also do think that if I care that much about each individual line that goes into those sections, I should show up more, I should show up at these meetings, or I should run and do your job, so.
Do you want to?
No.
There are four openings on the budget committee.
I did see that, I have been there, done that, um, you know, I think there's gotta be some level of us as voters, we, I, I vote for each of you knowing that you're doing that scrutiny of line by line, and so, give us.
Yes, we are.
I mean, we, we, we've seen though in the past, when we had town meeting, you start with three hundred, and you end up with maybe twenty-seven.
Right.
And we had a very important vote, it was decided by, I think, thirty-six people.
And we've seen that, uh, we've seen it at school deliberatives in past years, where people manipulated that system to their voting advantage too, so, you know, keep it short and simple.
Alright, well, I'll go with what the majority wants, I'm, I'm I'll go with what the majority wants.
Well, we have an opinion.
Well, then how do we get to a decision?
Well, I'm just saying, well, here, hold on a second.
Just, just.
But doesn't the, uh, budget committee, isn't it gonna be their real way of, we're just gonna, we're basically tonight saying, hey, this is what we think you should do.
That's fair.
Yeah.
And Michelle's gonna say, I agree with that, or I'm gonna do it this way.
That's fair, so you have budget committee this week?
Yeah, I'm gonna be there.
So this is all for not?
Well, now at least we can have a discussion at that meeting, I can say, the board did discuss this.
Yep.
And we thought we'd bring this up to you of X, Y, and Z, of what we talked about, and what is your opinion on it?
So the budget committee's meeting Thursday night?
I presume so, I haven't looked at my.
Even though there's a storm, that needs to be signed on Thursday, that's the law.
Well, the storm's tomorrow night, right?
Into Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, but it should be done by Thursday, so we should go with Thursday night.
You should be good.
Whether I have my planning board meeting tomorrow night is, is the question, so.
If you don't have your planning board meeting, you're down to two articles, 'cause that's all you've approved.
And that's fine with me, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, everything could get renumbered depending on what the planning board does, just, could be one number or two numbers earlier.
Actual articles and not Article Six, 'cause that will really mess me up.
But I would tell you right now, on the warrant articles, be prepared for.
This, yeah, I was.
Uh, even.
That's sort of my goal, was to make a script and to get heads up on what I'm gonna.
What do you think is gonna be the worst ones? I, I, personally, I, I think, based on what I've seen over the years, that this isn't that bad.
No, not really.
There's a bunch that has no impact.
Right.
No tax impact, and everything else is pretty standard, we're not asking for anything outrageous this year.
I think, I think the most heated discussions will come out of the tax cap.
Yeah, 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 but as far as the warrant articles, we're putting forward, I don't see anything that's a big
No.
Controversy.
Gary Anderson has an extensive amendment to his, which would probably make it more acceptable to the budget committee, so.
Michelle's last name is King, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And John Decker is the vice chair. They, but they've been a lot of times almost co-chairing, uh, the budget committee.
Yeah, I mean, eleven is gonna be, that's the one where, instead of splitting the highway stuff three and three, we've put, we're doing it two and four, that one could get some discussion, but.
But that could be easily explained.
Exactly.
And eleven, I mean, look, eleven's five, nothing on the select board, nine, nothing on budget.
E- e- exactly.
Article fifteen.
Well, yeah, that always comes up.
That was a five-four budget committee vote, you know, I think in pact, 'cause they wanted it to go towards not weed instead of aquatic, uh, invasive species.
Do you guys, while Don is here, do you wanna try to just run down through these?
Remember, Article nine got voted off last year.
Yeah.
So.
Decide ahead of time.
Expect Article nine to be the same issue we had last year.
Yeah, but this year, there's no tax impact.
Right.
There's principle behind that, so there's.
You mean, they think if we violate the law and don't do the revale?
I know you're laughing, but it's, it's not a.
Who's gonna make a motion to move, who wants to move Article six?
Alright, so here, I'll, I'll just, I'm just gonna throw this out there, I will make the motion on six, eleven, fourteen, and seventeen.
Six.
Six, eleven, fourteen, and seventeen, eighteen and nineteen are gonna go to the petitioners anyways, we don't have to worry about those.
Yep.
And I will second on, uh, on seven.
Hang on, run fast, eleven.
Wait, I mean.
Six, eleven.
Sorry, yeah, so I'll make the motion on six, eleven, fourteen, and seventeen, and then I will second the motion on seven, ten.
Seven, ten.
Fifteen, uh, how many is that?
Let me, let me do this in a spreadsheet.
I'm just doing it on this sheet right here, just the easy.
Yeah, I know, but it's, he's, he's picking what his seconds are.
Yeah, see, I'm just writing it whichever side you're on.
Second was seven, what was the next one?
Sweet.
Uh, seven, ten, thirteen, fifteen.
Okay, wait, how many do we have?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, oh, so I got like a third of them, it don't matter, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Alright, so wait, so the first, let's do the first and the second, so on, you said, Tony.
So the, uh, Article six, the budget, I'll, I'll motion on that.
Yeah.
And who wants the second?
Wants the second.
Probably should be John, where he was on the budget committee.
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
And then what else did you say, eleven you put forward?
Okay, yeah, eleven, I will make the motion on that.
And eleven is what?
That's the roads, four hundred thousand, who wants to second that one?
I, I'll do that second. And you said.
And I said fourteen, the police tech fund.
Anybody wanna second that?
I'll second it.
Tyler?
Yep.
Okay, and then seventeen, the veteran tax credit renewal.
You're looking for a first or a second?
I need a second.
What about Ben, where he's a veteran, or should it be someone who isn't a veteran?
Three veterans on this.
Yes, three veterans.
Ben will second it, won't he?
So Tony first, Ben second?
Sure, percent, yeah.
Alright.
What article's that?
I think that was seventeen, moved by Ben and seconded by Tony?
No, the other way around.
Okay.
Alright, so Article seven, ninety thousand for the building.
So I will second on that one.
I don't mind putting it forward.
That was the seven?
Yep, eight.
Tony, you're already seconding it.
Do you expect anything crazy on Article seven?
No.
Um.
Just to raise an appropriate ninety thousand, if you'd be.
If we explain it after we read the article towards just listing off all our problems, I think that'd be a.
So I think you should present, you should present.
Who's gonna present on that one, about the town building, should we ask Gary to, since he did the assessment?
No, no, I think, I think.
Is that come from us?
I think you present.
Is that like Article nineteen, you mean? Because Gary's Article nineteen.
No, Article seven is the need for putting money in the fund, we can speak to, I, I mean, I, I'll do it, we can speak to the work that the committee has done, what they've found, that the report, the, their report is in the town report, so, um, I don't have a problem with that one.
Donna, you're gonna move it, present and present it?
Yep.
And I'll second.
I'll second, okay, eight, the engineering projects for Calvert-on-Kelsey, et cetera, et cetera.
Incidentally, the library number is going up, so it's doubtful we get to Cooper Hill, the library's more expensive than it initially thought.
Who's gonna, who's gonna put eight forward?
I will, I'll be here.
And who's gonna second?
I'll second it.
Alright, nine is the revale.
Who's presenting that?
I'll present it.
You'll present it?
I'll second. Ten is the.
Wait, wait, hold, hold on, who's, John, John, were you gonna present eight, or were you gonna move on nine?
I'm presenting nine.
Oh, who's presenting eight?
Tyler.
I'm seconding eight.
Why don't whoever makes the motion do the presentation?
That's the assumption.
Perfect, thank you.
That's the assumption, yeah.
Okay, so, so on nine, it's gonna be what?
John, and then me, I'll second. Ten, forty thousand dollars for ambulance stuff.
So I'm seconding that one.
Ben?
Sure.
Ben first, Tony second.
Then the chief usually.
Yeah, I mean, that one we shouldn't have to.
No.
No, because.
But he usually likes to come up and give his narrative.
Let's not let him, I'm, let's not make him, was what I meant.
Not necessary.
'Cause it's not a big thing like a new truck or anything like that.
Yeah, okay.
What I usually tell the department heads is, don't speak to it unless somebody makes a motion to kill it or ask the question, because otherwise, it's going forward the way you've asked for it.
Yep, okay, number twelve, highway.
No, it was eleven.
Um, no, eleven, Tony is presenting and I'm seconding.
I'll present twelve.
And who wants to second, Tyler or Ben?
Right here, there you go.
So John, you're moving on twelve?
I'm, okay, moving, presenting, yeah.
Yep.
Who was second?
Tyler.
Okay.
I should probably write this down.
Oh.
I'm standing up there, going, giving like.
Thirteen, the hundred thousand dollars to the fire vehicle fund.
So I'm seconding that one, who wants to move it?
I will.
Okay.
Tyler?
Okay.
Tyler?
Fourteen, eh, wait, wait, that was thirteen?
Fourteen, I got presented and moved by Tony?
Fourteen is Tony and Tyler, and then fifteen is the.
Invasive species.
Invasive species.
I'm seconding that one.
I'll do it.
You're gonna.
Who's I?
Oh.
No, you beat me to it, Tyler.
So, for the, for the, for the, for the person doing minutes, that was Tyler that was going to move.
And you're seconding it, Tony?
Uh, fifteen, the invasive species, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sixteen, Ben, we only got your name on one thing here.
It's okay.
Well, I think you probably should take on something else.
Uh, I'd be more than happy to, well, seventeen.
We've got, you've already assembled talking points for.
Yes.
Yeah, all this.
Seventeen, are you taking?
Yeah, they're all, I handed, they're all in your packet, but I handed it out.
I'll put sixteen forward.
Who's motioning something?
Do you want me to second sixteen?
Sure. Tony's motion, you're second.
Alright, here's what I got, number six, Tony presents, John seconds, number seven, Donna presents, Tony seconds, number eight, Tyler presents, John seconds, number nine, John presents, Donna seconds, number ten, Ben presents, Tony seconds, number eleven, Tony presents, Donna seconds, number twelve, John presents, Tyler seconds, number thirteen, Tyler presents, Tony seconds, number fourteen, Tony presents, Tyler seconds, number fifteen, Tyler presents, Tony seconds, number sixteen, Donna presents, John seconds, number seventeen, Tony presents, Ben seconds. Is that in line with what everybody else had?
Yes.
Yes. Eighteen and nineteen go to the petitioners.
Yep.
You're both Gary Anderson, right?
Gary Anderson was kind of the lead on them, I don't know who among themselves is gonna present, but I would expect Gary.
I'll reach out too, I thought you guys.
Reach out to Gary.
Good. That was pingless.
Well, there you go.
And are you putting your recommendations on?
They're on all of them.
On the petition warrant articles too?
Oh, they're, they're on all the money articles.
Yeah, we don't make recommendations on petitioned articles unless there's a budgetary impact.
Big debate on that going on in my email right now with the.
Yeah.
Were you on that thread too?
Yeah, well, I think, I think the answer is, it's possible to do it, but it's not necessary to do it.
Yeah.
And so. And so why, 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 why unnecessarily jump into something if you don't have to?
Hey, Dawn, just so you know, we're still working through the AV issues.
Okay.
We got a quote from, um, one service that came in, eight thousand dollars, which obviously isn't going to be the path that we go, but we're still trying to work that.
Okay, so you are planning, though, like projector overhead for attempting it? Do you want a teenager to do it?
I mean, I don't know if we have to have it.
Does, does the overhead really add that much to what you're doing, I mean, I can.
Having been in the audience, I can say, yeah, it does. It does.
Well, the, so what would we be showing on it, the wording of the warrant, you know why it helps when warrant articles, the wording gets changed?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have a, okay, so you want a PowerPoint, the way I normally do it on a warrant article would be, like, show picture of the fire truck, how much is in the fund, you know, what the, what is asking for, for the fund, and just have three or four lines, just because it's so hard to read the entire text of the warrant article from the back of the room, but it's, uh, we can either do it with the wording, or we could do both, with the wording, but have something that shows pictorially what you're voting on.
I don't think we have to do that for everything.
Not for everything, but, but like you said, it, it's very helpful when making changes, you know?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But like, in the master budget article, the only change you can make is, is it, is the budget dollar number.
Yeah.
All right, Dawn, what else, do you need anything else from us?
So, legal questions, we're gonna have a lawyer on hand, I assume?
Yes.
She will be responding, she will be responding to legal questions?
Susan, right?
Yes, Susan.
And police officer on hand, staying on hand, not on call?
Can you talk to Fawn, usually?
I can, too.
Yeah, I mean, usually they, they are there.
I just feel like it's a budget thing, so I don't wanna tell her without your blessing, but.
No, you can talk.
Of course, I do.
Go ahead, you can talk to her.
Okay, I have the.
She, she might say she's gonna be there, so.
Well, that's what happened at the other day, the other day, what was that other day? The state general election, I think we had two people there, but they were also working, so.
Yeah.
They left at the moment I needed them.
Oh, yeah, that was a fun day. That was fun.
So I'd just like someone on hand there, that it is their job to be there. And so this is the election, oddly, that the, just going to the, popping to the actual voting day, this is the actual election, you don't have to be there by RSA, oddly. Are you guys going to be there, just so I can sort of schedule and plan?
I should be there all day.
You'll be there all day?
Can you just tell us what roles you want us to play, because sometimes there's been, like, four of us standing around not doing anything.
Yeah, that's kinda why I gave you tasks last time, I kept you super busy.
Yeah.
Feet probably still hurt.
Yeah, actually, that was fun, I think I lost twelve pounds.
But, yeah, that's why I like to know if you are, like, I think what happened at the, I did have you guys sort of scheduled and not everybody was able to make it, and then I was short-staffed, so definitely, do you all have my cell phone numbers?
I don't want a job, I just wanna fill in where necessary.
You just wanna look pretty.
I just wanna fill in when necessary, like, if somebody needs to go bathroom break, I'll sit in for them, or if somebody needs to do this, I'll sit in for them, if I have to go stand, I don't.
I tend to like to have one or two floaters anyway, but like absentee ballots are a huge task.
Yeah, I, I, I can help with that.
So, things like that, but, yeah, I can try, so.
I won't be a dealer.
You won't be there.
Questionable.
What day is it?
Questionable.
Tuesday.
Tuesday what?
Thirteenth, Tuesday or fourteenth?
Thirteen, fourteen, something like that.
Half the seven thirty's what I put last year's.
So Ben, you might not be there?
Fourteenth, Tuesday the fourteenth, so.
I'll do my best, but.
I'm gonna write my cell phone down on a piece of paper, 'cause I don't want the world knowing it, you all can just put it in your phones and just text me, you're not gonna be there, there, so I have enough people on hand.
You can't broadcast it?
What?
Can't broadcast it?
Do you don't want us to use your email?
Day of, it's kind of awful, like, if somebody's sick, or like Ben's not sure if he's gonna make it, 'cause I do have, like, a whole alternate list, so, you can text me and call me, yes, you may email me and email. Put my phone, so I know.
I should be able to be there most of the day, Dawn.
Okay. Tony, how about you, you know yet?
What?
Will you be there, Tony?
Not like the camera's gonna pick it up that far away.
Yeah, I'll be, yeah, I'll take the day off for voting day.
So you'll have John and Tony and I?
Okay. Pretty much it for me, I just wanted to. Have there been anything super, saying you're getting very low attendance, but, but have there been any articles in particular, I know the cap, that I should be ready for?
I think it's really gonna be a toss-up, because of the fact that there is a cap, I think some people might already, you know, be happy, 'cause they know it's, this is what it is.
Right.
You know, so maybe the normal crowd of naysayers, uh, that attend, might not be the same as, as normal. So that might be good, you know, because, I mean, we are at a cap, it's not like we're going, we're telling that we're doing a ten percent increase in our budget, where you'd find a lot more adversity, you know, with that, where it's, so, I, I'm hoping that everything goes nice and smooth, and I think the Budget Committee this year did a wonderful job, and even with everybody on the committee, as much as we disagreed. On things, you know, for the overall budget, we were all pretty civil with, with what it was. You know, so I think that went actually really well, so.
You all sit up front, and just a couple of Budget Committee, the whole Budget Committee sits up there, too?
Uh, usually the Budget Committee does sit up there.
Well, they're presenting the budget, so, yeah.
Yeah.
How many chairs and mics are you gonna have?
We usually have three or four tables up front with loaded up with chairs, so.
Can you get a feel for them, how many will be there?
Sure. One thing, one good thing for you to remember is that, as the moderator, is your meeting.
Yes.
Yours, so, don't, you know, if, if you need to.
You guys got that number?
Yeah, don't be afraid to use your authority to keep the meeting under control, you know, if, if somebody's heckling or whatever, I mean, your word is law, under the law, so, if you need, I mean, if it got bad enough that you needed to eject someone, don't hesitate.
It's been done.
It has been done.
I have watched, uh, there've been a lot in this past year of seminars and workshops on how to talk people down, how to, when to.
I, I, I'm not worried about Dawn, I think she's got a very sweet.
Sweet way of being authoritative.
Yes.
Velvet hammer.
Yeah, I was trying, I was looking for a way to say that.
Track more bees with honey.
The, the bless your heart thing.
Yes.
Bless your heart.
Bless your heart. Thank you, and when, so what date do you guys have all these, find, like, the order and all that will be?
Uh, just as soon as the planning board finishes, we'll just, um, uh, we'll, we'll know the numbering.
Okay.
They, they told me they had two more articles to consider, but if they don't meet, then we'll, everything will be, six will become four, you know?
Okay, and you'll shoot that to me then?
Yep.
And setup typically happens, I assume, after school on Friday?
We'll have to talk to Sean about that.
Okay.
And are you going by madam moderator or miss moderator? It matters.
Technically, madam, right?
That doesn't sound good.
That sounds old, I know.
It's your choice, I, I just don't wanna.
Is moderator?
Is moderator.
Is moderator.
Um, well, we'll have.
Miss has a role, bring to it, miss moderator.
Miss moderator.
Sounds better than madam.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
That sounds scandalous.
Yeah, yeah.
So actually, we have to talk about the setup for the two, for the deliberative session and the, um, election, so the highway department usually takes care of the election, um.
Who takes care of the deliberative session?
I don't know, we'll have to, I, probably the school.
Got an animal.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, they roll out the mats and, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you do the facility use form, Kelly can just fill up facility use form, and they pretty much know.
I'll have Kelly check this.
The only tricky thing will be that snow day at five o'clock, I guess it'll be pretty quick, but have to.
Well, if they don't need the gym on Monday, they'll just leave what's set up on Saturday.
That, they'll probably need.
He'll, he'll.
They need the gym?
Probably, yeah.
Basketball season, they'll definitely need it.
You'll be fine. You don't get butterflies up in front of a crowd, do you?
I do not.
Okay.
I mean, none that you would ever know.
Well, since you're sitting here, here's a question for you, just in general, are we having candidates tonight?
I don't know, 'cause I always moderate that, no one is.
I know.
You.
Well, I know we had the COVID thing, so we didn't, but then.
No, we did it last, I did it last year.
Did we have it last year? Yeah, okay, just.
We did it last year, no one's, I don't know if Lorraine's, Lorraine used to organize it and roped me into it, she's, I don't know if she's given up or not.
You're gonna carry the torch.
Yeah, no, I actually did it, I ironically did it for years under PTA, then under.
Can't get away from it.
They usually waited till they're working.
Well, I mean, there's quite a few candidates that possibly could be, uh, there's a lot of positions open, so.
Yeah, no, I think.
There's still time, though, 'cause usually we do it, like, when we do do it, the week right before the actual voting, so, I've not heard anything yet.
Just figured I'd ask you, since you're sitting here.
Thanks for coming in, Dawn.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, have a good night.
Night.
All right, let's go back, circle back, we have minutes to do, John, did you get all the way through your report?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we have manifests?
Uh, we do have manifests, yeah.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, and the payroll manifest of January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Tyler Eaton, roll call, vote.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tyler Eaton.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas. All right, uh, I'll make the, uh, would the minutes, um, edited or corrected in any way?
Did anybody have any?
Yeah, did anybody have any corrections? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the public minutes of January ninth and January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.